Okay, so make sure she's in for roll call.
Yep, she's in right now. Here we go.
We'll call the meeting to order. If we could stand and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Here.
Ms. Doherty?
Here.
Mr. Lay?
Here.
Mira Lahey?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Dakota?
Here.
Seven present.
First on the agenda, we have special order of business, introduction of the newly elected Lowell High School senior class Senator Christopher Ferreira. Christopher, want to stand up and just say hello? Stand up so we can see you. Congratulations. Do you have any wise words for us as Senator?
I'm really happy to be here. I've only recently started like keeping up with Lowell local politics and I'm just really glad to have a seat up here.
Thank you. Congratulations. Next, we have minutes. Need a motion to approve the regular scheduled and special meeting minutes of the Lowell School Committee, September 15th, September 23rd, and place them on file. So need a motion by Mr. Dillon, second by Mr. Dakota. All those in favor. Next, we have permission to enter. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The permission to enter for this, for this meeting are within your packet. The recommendations approval is written. Staffs available for any questions.
Any questions on permission to enter? I just have one quick question if nobody else does. The last one there, the, the last one for 24,000. What is, what are they actually going to be doing for us, I guess?
Yes, Ms. Phillips?
So, Liza Tulluson will support the, the trainings for principals as well as coaching follow-up.
Coaching who? Excuse me.
The school leaders are going through training around coaching, coaching for equity, and she will support me in my office in supporting the 28 school buildings and the leaders within those buildings.
Okay. So what is, don't we have someone that does this though? Can't think of her title, but no. All right. Who's the, sorry, I can't think of the, the name and the title, but the woman that does the, she does the, I don't know if she's psychologist or...
This, this might be who you're talking about, because she's...
Yeah, social worker. I'm working...
Oh, no.
With that.
Okay. So this individual's not a social worker, but you might be referencing actually this individual, Mr. Mayor. She's done work for the district before and at Lowell High School. She's done different work. I believe Ms. Phillips was with the Student Voices work that she did.
And she actually worked with our diverse teacher leaders.
The diverse teacher leaders that she's done before. She's not a social worker though, Mr. Mayor. That's a different, different area. Are you referring to our social emotional learning coordinator perhaps?
Yeah, yeah. Who's that again?
That's Ms. Killily. She works in Ms. Desmond's office around our social emotional learning.
Okay, yeah. So that's a whole different thing.
It is.
Okay. All right. Jackie, you have a question? And Ms. Doherty?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. My question is regarding the Commonwealth Consulting Agency expenditure. I just, I know that we've been moving towards universal design for learning, but I'm just wondering why this particular agency, it's out of Puerto Rico, I think. And I just had, if we could have some little more information about that, because it's 53,000 for this consulting. Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent?
Ms. Desmond?
So, this is a name change from the, the prior organization that we used last year, which was RECA. It is now called Commonwealth Consulting Agency. It is the agency that the Department of Ed utilizes for the MTS academies, which our turnaround schools all participate in. And this is to extend that work through coaching and implementation strategies at the school level for our school redesign. And it's written into the grant that's been approved by the state.
Thank you. So they just happen to be out of Puerto Rico? Okay.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other questions on permission? Mr. Dillon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It might be Ms. Desmond to answer this one. You know, as part of implementing a universal design for learning, are we, are we now not tracking our middle school level kids as far as placing them into a classroom with peers on the same academic level?
Ms. Desmond?
So at the middle school level, actually K to eight, what we do is we assess students. We learn where they're at in a particular area. We meet them where they're at and we move them forward. As far as the middle school level, depending on, you know, a student's overall grade in a particular area such as mathematics, they may qualify for an algebra course. And so that's the type of identification that occurs. If a student has mastered the standards in mathematics at their grade level and qualifies for algebra, then they would participate in that course. But outside of that, really, we assess all students regularly, benchmark assessments, and then also regular assessments beyond that to find out where they're at, and then we meet their needs from there.
And also, so you mentioned the algebra is, so does that, the universal design for learning, eliminate the possibility of Algebra I in the, on the eighth grade level? No? Is it an after-school algebra class? Or are some of our schools doing it that way? No? Oh, so the eighth graders have the opportunity to take Algebra I?
Ms. Desmond?
Yes, that's how it works. Yep.
Thank you.
And just, universal design is an actual pedagogy for all content areas, so it's really about offering, you know, designing your lessons so that there's something that allows an entry point for all students.
Yeah, I understand that. I was just looking for, I'm just, I'm just concerned about our best and brightest and making sure that they're, you know, pushing themselves on a path to, you know, start taking advanced courses in high school. Thank you. Can we separate out the last one, by the way, Mr. Mayor?
Sure, separate the last one?
Yep.
The Boston... Sure, the Boston Higashi School? That one?
No, on the next page. I think that's the second page.
Oh, all right.
I believe he's referring to the equity training.
Yeah.
Is that accurate?
Yes.
Ms. Dillon? The equity training, Mr. Mayor, that's the last item on page three?
Yep, okay. So need a motion to accept everything except the last item on page three by Mr. Dillon, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Mira Lahey?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yeses approved.
All right. Then a motion to approve the last item. Liza Tulluson, PhD. Need a motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Lay. Roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
No.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Mira Lahey?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Six shays, one nay, approved.
Okay. Next, we have memorials. We have one on the agenda and then a late one. So the first one on the agenda is Mr. Joseph Sexton Jr., retired McAvenue School Teacher. And then Mr. Dillon, you have another one?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Recently passing away is Patrick Wayne. He was a graduate of Lowell High School and actually an all-state champion wrestler. I wrestled with him in high school, considered him a friend. And his services this afternoon and his funeral is tomorrow morning. So I wanted him to be included. Thank you.
Thank you. If we can dim the lights. Okay. Next, we have motions. First motion tonight by Ms. Clark, request Human Resource and Labor Relations Subcommittee meeting to review and discuss Superintendent's strategies, goals for the academic year 2021, 2022. Seconded by Mr. Dillon, Ms. Clark.
Thank you. This is the time of year that we should be preparing for the performance evaluation that will happen at the end of the academic year, but this is the time to discuss goals, you know, ask any questions. We've been provided with some information, but I believe we should do a deeper dive at our Human Resources or Personnel Subcommittee.
Thank you. Any other questions? Is this, sure, Mr. Dakota?
I think in years past, we've always discussed these goals and so forth in, in our regular meetings. I don't see the need of having a Subcommittee meeting to talk that over. I think we can do it at a regular meeting. Have it set up that way. I don't know that we need to do, I'm sorry, we don't, I don't think we do need to do that. Thank you.
I was going to ask the same thing, if it was going to go to full committee or Subcommittee, so I'm not... Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, we could always plan it for a regularly scheduled meeting and refer to Subcommittee if it's something that needs, needs it at the time. I don't know, just a suggestion. Yep.
Okay. Anybody else? Ms. Martin?
Hi. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'd just say, I think it's fine to do it at a full School Committee meeting. I would request though that we don't plan to do it this evening, if that would be amenable to the committee that we postponed it to our next meeting, or if we needed to schedule a special meeting to, to go over it, depending on the length.
Okay. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to, I, I agree. I think we could do it in a full meeting. I know everybody's concerned about time constraints. And I think it's important to note that according to the Superintendent's contract, we were supposed to have these goals and strategies worked out before the October 1st date. So we are running late, and I would agree with Ms. Martin. We should schedule it for our next meeting and put it on the agenda as the first item to discuss. I think that, I, I don't know if I need to remind you all of what a shortened timeframe we had for the evaluation process, which also had, was stated in the Superintendent's contract that needed to be done by June 1st. So I think it's, it's, it's on, on us to really make this happen soon. So I would ask that we put it on for the next regularly scheduled meeting, put it on the agenda, and allow the time to do the due diligence that we should do, and also be planning ahead so that the evaluation for next year is not under the same kind of time constraints that we had with the last one. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? So do you want to withdraw the motion or change the motion to do it in a regular meeting, or do you want to keep your motion the way it is?
I mean, it doesn't sound like I have the support so of my colleagues here to move the motion forward. If it's the will of the body to discuss it at an upcoming regularly scheduled School Committee meeting, I agree. I think we should take some time though to go over this. So if, if it means that that's the first topic on the agenda for the next School Committee meeting, and that's amenable to everyone, that, that works for me. I'm, I think we need to have time to go over this and ask questions and make sure that we're all in agreement with the goals for this year.
Right. And this is what was in our packet?
Mm-hmm.
Right. Okay. So do you want to just make your motion to say next scheduled meeting?
Next scheduled meeting is fine. That's fine. Mm-hmm.
All right. So we amend the, the motion to say next scheduled meeting? Did you have another question? Okay. So all those in favor of the amended motion, say aye?
Aye.
Next motion tonight by Mr. Dillon, request, request committee readdress Lowell Public Schools mask policy in general, particularly regarding physical activity. Seconded by, seconded by Mr. Lay. Mr. Dillon?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Lay. I just wanted to continue to bring up the question. You know, we stopped having COVID updates on our packet agenda, and we stopped looking at the numbers, and we don't have, we don't have a real way for this mask situation to end in Lowell Public Schools. And frankly, I, I think it, you know, if we continue to just bow down to the state in this way on the mask policy, then next is coming a vaccine policy. And the parameters set by the state for taking off masks are requiring an 80%, 80% vaccination rate for teachers and students. That's insane. I mean, it could be, that, that's no end, basically, is what it is. And, you know, so I want to continue to have this discussion. We can't just let it disappear and never talk about it again. And I'd also appreciate COVID number updates if we, you know, if we could do that in the future. Because we haven't even heard anything about it. You know, and that's what was driving us through all last year in our decision-making. And now we've just thrown our hands up. So I, I'd really like this discussion to stay relevant. And also, there has to be, there has to be a way that physical activity, you know, is exempt from the mask policy. You know, we're, we're coming into the winter sports season, and we're going to have athletes in the gym, in the Lowell High Gym, other, you know, other after-school activities in the middle schools where they're wearing masks. I mean, we're going to have our kids wearing masks, playing basketball, wrestling, any type of physical activity, it's absurd. I think it's absurd in here. And so we need to continue to have that, have this conversation. I don't, certainly not expecting anything to come out of this, because I know nobody in here has the, nobody, nobody will admit it, but I think it's getting crazy and we need to continue talking about it. Is there any sort of, maybe, Mr. Superintendent? Any sort of inkling that you've gotten that somehow, sometime soon, there are going to be other mask? I mean, do we have any expectation that November 1st is just going to come and go like the rest of these dates? I mean, sure, you can go ahead.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure, Mr. Superintendent?
So typically, when it's a policy of the state, we receive updates closer to the timeline. So with the extension to November 1, we received it the last week of October when that information was disseminated out to the community. I would anticipate that we won't hear about November 1 until closer to the end of October. The vaccination 80% is an October 15 deadline. I would anticipate that as we, that we should be hearing any day about how that's operating within other school districts. I don't have a recommendation right now for the committee at this meeting regarding any aspect of that 80% threshold, but we should start to hear from other communities regarding how they're operationalizing that any day now. And then for the November 1 date, I would expect you're looking probably last week of October, if we follow the same pattern that we saw here, as to whether that's going to hold or it's going to be lifted.
So it's, the date's going to come and go, and we're still going to be in masks? You know, I mean, that's, that's, if we, if we've learned anything over the last two years. You know, we have, I believe we have union members here, and I would think that they would be concerned about this also, because the vaccine mandate's coming next for them. And any type of union should have an issue with a vaccine mandate coming down on their, on their staff. So I would think it would be something that they would be very interested in, and we need to, so when does it get to the point when we can defy the state?
That for me and Mr. Superintendent?
Mr. Mayor, I believe that question would perhaps be better, better positioned for the Chair of the Body. I can share with you recommendations, and I can share with you both the, and I can also share with you the risks of doing so, but I could never recommend to the Body that we defy the laws of the land. So, so I can share if the committee is interested as, in understanding what those risks are, if the committee's so inclined. Otherwise, I would defer to the Chair if that's the intent of the Body. I could not recommend to the committee.
Well, yeah, no, I'd like to hear what you have to say, I guess, but I don't think I'm going to need any support, so, but I would like to hear what you have to say, if you don't mind.
Well, I mean, you are, where's the motion? I mean, you could, you just want to wait for his, his report at the next meeting, or do you want to hear something now?
I, I don't know.
I mean, give them time to...
Take a verbal. I don't need a report, because I, you know, but I would like to hear what Dr. Boyd has to say.
I think the short answer is that that risk could be quite significant. I would like to check with Council before giving you a public response.
Okay.
But I could prepare that for you, and I couldn't prepare that for the committee. You should know what the risks are of every decision that you take and make. So if, Mr. Mayor, if you're okay with that, I will consult with Council and make sure that the committee gets an accurate answer on that.
Yeah, that's good.
That's fine. Thank you.
Ms. Doherty, you had a question?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to say I completely support my colleagues' interest in getting updates on COVID. I think we absolutely should be getting those updates. I know the city is tracking it, and I, I think it's important for us to know what's happening in the schools in terms of, we're getting state directives regarding health initiatives, which I think we, we should follow and listen to carefully, but we also have to listen to our own Department of Public Health and what's happening in our city. So I think that if anything comes from this motion, it would be that we have at our, our meetings, that there's some piece of update, even if it's just a short report. Like, I happened to be speaking to Joanne Keegan today, and she said that in the last 14 days in Lowell, 36% of the identified COVID-positive cases have been people less than 19 years old. So, and it was 34% the two weeks before that or the week before that, however they're tracking it. So from her perspective, the number of young people who are getting COVID is going up. So that's something we want to be watching, because that was when the, when the virus first came out, it didn't seem to be impacting young people. But now we're getting variants that are, you know, obviously having different contagious elements to it. And I'm not a health professional, I don't pretend to be, but I do like to listen to our health experts and the advice they give us. At this time, I think we should stay with the mask mandate, and I think that the vaccines are our safest route forward for making sure that people, when they get it, they don't end up hospitalized. That's really the whole key. But, thank you. I do think we should get COVID updates. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dillon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the info, Ms. Doherty, but I'm not really interested in cases under 19 years old. I'd be more interested in hospitalization and fatality numbers, you know, in our reports, if we can get that. That would be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have a registered speaker?
Yes.
Are they here or are they on Zoom?
Chris Mercurio?
Doesn't seem like they're here.
No.
All right. Any other discussion on this one? Ms. Martin?
So could I just ask, I know there's been some varying opinion, but my sense also would be that it would be helpful for us to start getting the regular COVID reports that we used to receive previously. So is that, I don't know if, if it's within the purview of Mr. Dillon's motion, or if we need to make something separate to make that request so that starting at our next meeting, we could get that same? I mean, it was like two different kind of dashboards really that just tracked it for us.
Mr. Mayor, if it's okay, I can take that under advisement, and I commit to making sure that you get those reports each. It's just a simple request, and we can, we can meet that request.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so why don't we do a roll call on this? And the way the motion reads, to me, is request the committee readdress the Lowell School mask policy in general, particularly regarding physical activity. So I'm going to vote in favor of it, because I'd like to see what the Superintendent has to say. It doesn't hurt to get information, so why don't we do a-
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Were we just talking about pertaining to what he was going to come back with us?
Yeah.
Information after, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
You're going to get a, you know, whatever, a report next meeting, so.
Great.
Yep. Okay. Sure, question?
Can I clarify what the motion, then what the motion means? Because my understanding is the, or maybe, Mr. Dillon, I guess if you can clarify-
No, I mean, it just says he wants, he wants the committee to readdress the Lowell Public Schools mask policy in general, particularly regarding physical activity. So if we pass the motion tonight, and the Superintendent just comes back with his guidance, then we can, we can take action, or we don't have to take action, so.
And just to clarify, this is guidance that would go against Desi's rules at this point in time? That's what we're asking?
Yeah, I mean, I'd, I'd be sorry to jump in, but I'd be happy to, you know, submit another motion that, you know, requests the information that we were talking about, going against the state after Dr. Boyd comes back after consulting counsel. You know, we could change the wording, because, you know, this policy, I mean, this motion wasn't necessarily meant to have action, but I, I do want to continue the discussion, and if what comes out of it is more COVID updates, and, you know, Dr. Boyd's analysis of defying state orders, then that's great. But, you know, the, the motion doesn't read necessarily that those two things are coming out of it. So, you know, I'd, I'd be happy to just, you know, reword the motion to say, you know, request that Dr. Boyd provide guidance on, you know, outcomes that might come from defying the state on mask orders, if that works for everybody.
Yeah, yep.
Sure. I think it was just confusing, because the motion doesn't necessarily read that we're going to get that, that info.
You have it? Okay, so, all right. So, just one more time, just read the motion again, so we can-
Yeah, well, so we're seeking guidance from Dr. Boyd on possible outcomes for defying state orders on mask policy? Is that something that would affect?
Um, well, well-
Well, you know, I mean, I don't think we need a motion on that, to be honest with you. I think this can just happen.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, we do have, Dr. Hall, is there clarity on what we would be seeking an opinion on here? It is a legal opinion, so I might, I might seek your advice here to make sure that the question is-
There has to be some precedent, is there not, on-
The question, as I understand it, Dr. Hall, is what are the risks to the committee if it were to choose to go in a direction that differs or is contrary to the state's requirements for public schools? Is that, is that worded? Is that accurate?
Sure, yep.
Is that accurate, Mr. Mayor, from what you understand?
Yeah, seeking information on what would happen if we went against the mask policy.
Is there precedent in the state? Do we know? Does anybody know that? I mean, have communities gone optional, and?
I'm not aware of any, any such communities. If there's a-
Okay.
If they exist, they haven't been brought to my attention.
All right, yeah, no, that sounds good to me, though. Thank you.
All right, so again, I'm just, I'm not saying I'm going against the mask policy, but I'm all for getting a report, so. Any other questions on the motion? Does everybody kind of understand, understand what it is? Do you have it?
Somewhat, yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right. You want a roll call, then?
Sure.
Oh, okay, why don't we do a roll call?
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
No.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Mia Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
No.
Ms. Clark?
No.
Mr. Dakota?
No.
Four nays, three ayes, motion fails.
All right, next motion tonight by Mr. Dillon, requests that the committee and the administration discuss the initial steps required to improve our district map, school assignment policy, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is a topic that, in one way or another, has come up often, I think, over the last, at least during this term, for this committee, in a lot of different areas. And, you know, going forward, I do believe that at least they change to our district map, and, you know, certainly that would include school assignment policy, and defying the consent decree from 1988, I believe it is. And I, so I'd like to know what, you know, our first steps need to be in order to challenge that decree, because I think we've come quite a long way from that point, and points have been brought up over and over again, I think, that support us going to a, either a more, either a setup with more districts, or at least just getting kids going to school closer to home. You know, we're in the middle of a transportation issue right now, and certainly so having more kids going to school closer to home could help us there. We're, you know, we're electing our officials in our district, so, you know, it makes a lot of sense that kids are going to school in the district, or at least close to the district that their parents are electing, you know, this body from. And so I guess I'm looking for guidance, or, you know, guidance to the committee on what those steps need to be. What do we have to do to, to prove, to, I don't know, do we have to take it before a judge? But whatever that means, I'd like to start brainstorming now, and just so we know where to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, no discussion. Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am a strong proponent for neighborhood schools, and we've, we've had this conversation a number of times over the last six years. And I think it's been made very clear by, by Mr. Dakota, the transportation guru, that there is a way to, to get back into neighborhood schools if we can possibly get another school built or bought incentiveal. I keep bringing that up, and I don't know if I should be bringing that up as a motion, that the, that the Superintendent sit down with the city and, and really talk this through, along with you, the mayor, to, to get us on that track to buy St. Louis. It's the solution that's sitting right there, waiting for us. We've got to, we've got to do that. Otherwise, we're, we're stuck with the way we are right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Last motion tonight by Mr. Oh, you want to talk?
I was sorry, I was hoping to request a roll call.
You want a roll call?
Actually, sorry.
Sure, go ahead, Ms. Doherty.
I, I want to say that I think that we need to look at our whole, our zoning, and the citywide schools, and all those pieces together. So I, I do support this motion, but it's very important to me that we continue to have that desegregation, that balance between desegregating our schools and neighborhood schools. So I am going to support getting this information, but as Mr. Dakota mentioned, it's, it's complicated, it's not a simple thing, and that, that balancing is important to me. So going forward, I would be looking for that to happen, but I think we should, we should have those discussions. This has been going on a lot longer than the last two years, trying to solve this issue. So I think we should be putting that out on the table again and discussing it, but not from the perspective that we're going to be segregated schools, that we're not going to lose that balance that is so part of the strength of our diversity.
All right, thank you. Ms. Martin?
If I could, then, maybe I'm misunderstanding the motion, because my, my understanding is that we're looking for what, the process for, for defying the, the consent decree, and being able to, you know, eliminate that from our, our school choice and, and other decision-making. Sorry to parse, but if we could, just to be clear on what it exactly is that we're looking for.
Well, I mean, the motion plain, the motion just really reads to improve our district map and school assignment policy. As the motion reads, it's pretty clear, but maybe when you added some comments, it, so, Mr. Dillon?
Sure. Yeah, well, I, I think in order to change these things, we, we would need to defy the consent decree, you know, and that's something that I think is eventually going to need to happen. So I, I'm just looking for the, you know, what do we have to do? How long, you know, what is that going to take? If we're talking about moving away from this only two-district situation that we're in right now, and with all the transportation needs that come along with it, then, yeah, we might have to go and prove it in court. So I, you know, I, I want to know how that process is going to have to go. You know, and, you know, my, my colleagues have said it, it's been going on a lot longer than two years, it's been going on eight years, and we still haven't made any moves on it. So I just, I, I want, I want the ducks in a row, I want to, you know, line up the steps, well, if we're going to change this, then, you know, well, we got to go and do this, this needs to happen, this needs to happen. What is the first step if we do want to defy the order? And, you know, we've already, we've been over this. Ms. Phillips made it very clear that even if we were in a strict neighborhood schools model today, we would have negligible difference in diversity in our schools across the city, you know? So I, I don't understand when the word segregation comes up during this conversation. It's laughable. We're not segregated whatsoever. We have actually excellent diversity throughout the entire city, so. But I'm just looking at what it's going to take. This process that we've been talking about for so long, I'd like to start moving and taking action. Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I won't be supporting the motion, because I do have concerns around, it's the subtext that's being described now, of wanting to, you know, investigate the legal strategies for eliminating the consent decree. I also think that, to look at the report that we were given, and yes, the first topic area, the first kind of information point said that, yes, you could balance your schools with a 50% majority, 50% minority. That's not diverse. The second part of the presentation talked about how you would have schools that had, basically had two races in them, because of the way and the population, the way the population is spread through our community, so you don't get diversity. You have schools that have two predominant nationalities or, or minority groups, but not the full, the full range of, of diversity that we talk about and that we celebrate here in the city. The third component of that report made it very clear that there is no socioeconomic diversity that can be achieved if you strictly go with neighborhood schools. And I think that that's another key part of diversity that we want to see addressed, and that this system that has been in place since the 80s has addressed. The idea that, again, the, the covenant we entered into in building all of the new schools that are part, well, new schools now, I suppose you have to start counting, now that they're up above 30, 40 years, but that was the, the covenant you entered into, that the state would pay upwards of 90% of every dollar that was spent in building these new schools, because we entered into a consent decree that declared we would keep our schools desegregated, and that they would be representative of the full diversity here in our community. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? We already did, did you speak two or three times already?
Whoa, and the comments just keep coming, I mean-
Well, I know, but we're supposed to just speak twice on it, and then we'll-
Well, can I ask Ms. Martin a question?
Well, no, it's not a debate, really, it's just-
Well-
An about the motion up and down. Ms. Clark?
She's going to come in, you know, late.
I know, let's just go through the comments, Ms. Clark.
Thank you. Based on the additional information and conversation, I, I agree with my, while I, while the motion is written in a way that I can understand, and I think we all would hope that we can make, we, we want to make some improvements in the map and the school assignment policy. I do think, based on some of the additional information that's been discussed, that I, I would not support moving in a-
Everybody, thank you.
To defy the consent decree. However, I do think that there are improvements that we can make, and I think that's what we have been looking at, and I, I agree with my colleague, Ms. Martin, in that we are looking for, to ensure that we have diversity among a number of areas, not just ethnicity. And I think we should be continuing to look at how to improve these processes, but I don't know that this motion is ultimately getting us to that end. But I do believe that work is still happening. I know there's a reference in it to the, in terms of the goals that the Superintendent has put forward, that I think we're going to talk about next meeting, as we talked, or agreed earlier. So, so I also will not be supporting the, the motion as written, but I do think we, we as a body are all looking for, to the same end. We want to improve the process overall, improve the student diversity across our schools. The other piece of this, I think we also need to ensure that our schools are equitable, that we are having, before we can really move to a neighborhood model, if that is the direction that we ultimately go, or closer to that, we need to ensure that all of our schools are providing equitable education, and, and that is not something we currently have. As we know, we've got some schools that are in our Renaissance Network, that we need to continue to provide additional supports. And I think we're moving in the right direction by providing those supports, but we do have a ways to go, so, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you. I just want to clarify, because I misunderstood the motion. I, I, my whole intention, and what we've been talking about for years, not just the last two years, has been ways to improve the system, not defy the consent decree. So I would not support this motion if that's the intention, which it seems to now be. I misunderstood the maker's intention. I, I'm looking to make improvements while still looking to be as diversified as we need to be and should be. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Ms. Clark, well said by Ms. Clark, and I agree, and I agree with my colleague, Ms. Martin, about the, the motion to challenge the consent decree. I will not support this motion because of, because of that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. If you have a clarification, Mr. Dillon, I can't let you keep going on, we speak twice, that's it.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I would like to clarify, because now, you know, everybody gets scared as soon as you say consent decree. Going against the, the consent decree strains this district in a lot of different ways, and in order to change our map, we may have to defy the consent decree. I'm not, what, this turned into, everybody just got scared, because, you know, you hear the word diversity, and nobody can, no, we can't go against that. What do you think I'm trying to do? I'm requesting information on how we move forward, and part of us changing our districts may be that we need to defy some of the rules of the consent decree. So I'm looking for some information to move that way. I think we understand now why nothing has moved on this in the last 10 years, or however long we've been talking about it, because nobody's got the guts to just say that we, yeah, let's go, let's fact find, let's see how, let's see exactly what we need to do. It's turned into a, a race issue. Request, just get the information, I don't know.
All right, anybody else? All right. I'm, I'm, huh? Yeah, no, I was going to say, we'll do a roll call. I hear the arguments from everybody, I'm just going to support the motion as is for the information, and then we'll see where it goes from there, but everybody can do what they want, so roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
No.
Mr. Lay?
No.
Mia Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
No.
Ms. Clark?
No.
Mr. Dakota?
No.
Two ayes, five nays, motion fails.
All right, last motion tonight, requests by Mr. Dillon, requests Superintendent, update the committee on current staffing of school resource officers in the Lowell Public Schools, seconded by Ms. Martin. Mr. Dillon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, I have gotten information, you know, straight from Dr. Boyd on this topic, and it sounds like it's, you know, it's maybe COVID-related and, and staffing issues, but school resource officer, resource officers are important to our operation. Unfortunately, there was, I think, an incident today down in Texas at a school, and our officers being in and around the school and getting to know the kids is a valuable part of, of this school system, and, and so I, I'm a proponent of having them in our schools, and any opportunity that we get to- of having them in our schools and any opportunity that we get to, um, you know, increase those positions or at least back to where they were, uh, previous. Um, but I was just looking for information from Dr. Boyd maybe on where we're at and how we're trying to mitigate that and move forward. Thanks.
Any other comments on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, reports of the superintendent, Mr. Superintendent, enrollment, what? Oh, sorry. Subcommittee reports, facilities, transportation, subcommittee report. Ms. Doherty?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Yes, the facility subcommittee met, um, and at that time, we, uh, determined, um, we are gonna wait to have our collective agreement, our collective meeting with the city till we get the HVAC report and assessment about what our needs are. But we did have, um, a discussion about how important it is to keep this money that's been earmarked for facilities improvements, and I believe the number is, uh, fifteen point two million, something, some change in that. Um, and there was a vote by the committee at that time to recommend to the full committee that we, um, stay true to that number, keep that money set aside from the S R funds that we're receiving to focus on these facility improvements, um, given the parameters that we're allowed to use it on facilities, which will be around ventilation, HVAC, issues that are gonna improve the air quality in our schools and keep our kids and our staff safer. So, I would put that forward as a, a report of progress, and, um, I don't know if we need to take a full vote of the committee to, we already made this, uh, determination to set this money aside, but just to ask that we continue to hold true to that, uh, keeping those funds for that purpose.
All right. So, the motion was made to set aside the fifteen million, two oh three, eight forty?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And that's it for the report?
Yes.
Okay. So, how about, uh, motion or accept the report, a report of progress and accept the motion made during the meeting? Motion by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Dillon. All in favor, say aye. Huh?
Aye.
You sure? Mike never does. I guess we need a roll call. Roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Mia Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yays, approved.
Okay. Onto the, uh, reports, enrollment report, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is your standard enrollment report. Uh, it's also though, however, your report as of October one, that's the snapshot that the state uses for your foundation budget. Important to note, uh, Ms. Phillips did put forward, uh, memo that lays it out in, in further detail, but it's important to note that the verification window continues through this month, and through that, it won't be till the end of that verification window that we can finalize our enrollment number for budget purposes. Uh, as of right now, however, uh, you can see that we are anticipating and forecasting an increase from last year's enrollment, uh, to the enrollment that you can, uh, anticipate for this year, but again, I would caution the committee, no final decisions can be made based on the snapshot. It does have to go through a verification process that is done in conjunction with the state that requires a significant amount of work before we can confirm that number at the end of this month. Uh, with that, Ms. Phillips did put together the report. There was also a request from the committee, uh, a couple of weeks ago to have Ms. Duda in attendance. She is also here as well. If there are any questions, staffs available. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Do we have a registered speaker, or did you have, um, Mr. McCosker and Ms. Duda here for questions?
I believe, Fred, I believe you signed up to speak, correct? Mr. McCosker, I believe you signed up to speak.
You wanna, we wanna go to the registered speaker first? Yeah. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Um, my name is Fred McCosker, I live on Bottomus Trail in Nashua, New Hampshire. I worked for the Lowell Public School System for over thirty-one years in a variety of capacities. I'm here today not to indict any individual, any department, but I'm here to talk about Family Resource Center, and I would like people to dwell in the possibility of what can be improved there. So, i- it's in that spirit, I want you to listen to these comments through the lens of being a parent or a child trying to get into school and not through the lens of what's wrong. The Family Resource Center is the gateway to the Lowell Public School System. We need to think about a gateway to our system from the perspective of W. Edward Demings, is that every system is perfectly designed to get the results it gets. Now that we're moving away for COVID, I think this is a perfect opportunity to begin exploring a single hybrid pre-registration model that includes use of computers, definitely use of mobile devices, and in-person visits to the Family Resource Center. I think we have to remember that the, it's a pre-registration system. Students are not officially registered until we pull them off that pre-registration and put them on our enrollment list. The current system has two pre-registration platforms. One is Google Docs, which parents can use computer and a mobile device. I can't believe how many stu, parents of kindergarten, first grade students use their phones. They have everything on their phones, birth certificate, immunizations, proof of address. The second one is Aspen, a little bit preferable because it goes right into our system. However, you can't use a mobile device. Additionally, parents have had trouble logging back in after they have started an application. Um, with both systems, if you register more than one student, if you have, we had one I have family of seven, those seven children will end up with four or five, will end up with all, four, five different enrollment clerks. So, everyone's working at different levels and different paces. In the old system, when we just did in-person, you came in with a family of seven, you were the clerk that got that case, you got all seven children, and it assisted you with getting the documents. Um, when you have a child in the Lowell Public School System, you have a fifth grader, a sixth grader, and you're registering a kindergarten, when you go into Aspen, it tells you you already have an account, which you do because you've used your email for your old child. So, this says you have to ask your system administrator for a password. Now, we've never used the K through A portal, uh, the parent portal for our K through A children, only for the high school. So, you know, to be honest, if I have a parent call me and said, I don't know my password, I just refer them to Google Docs, register on Google Docs, because I don't know who in the Aspen world can change their password. I also suggest they use another email rather than their existing one, and they can create an account that way. Um, four documents are required to pre-register, birth certificate, immunizations, proof of address, and a parent photo ID. You would not believe the complications with those four documents. Um, and they, they come in all shapes and sizes, and I'm not gonna bore you with the anecdotal stories. Students transferring into the district, there's an additional system of we need to get a release of information. Now, that release of information is not part of our pre-registration process. When we get the pre-registration and we request the parents send them the documents, we then have to send them the release, hoping we'll get it back. So, uh, as we look at a platform, we really need somehow incorporate a release in that system. Why do we need releases? Many of the children coming in have I E Ps. We need the I E Ps before we place the students. Uh, high school, vitally important. I can't transfer a junior in high school to Lowell High unless the guidance counselor has the transcript in front of them to develop a schedule. When you think about once that student re, pre registers, the departments involved include the Office of Teaching and Learning for Language, special education to look at the I E P and give Family Resource recommendations where that child should be placed, busing, McKinney-Vento staff, I think we're up to fifteen hundred homeless students, and it's increasing by the day. We're seeing people renting rooms and houses. So, when you go back to those four levels of documents and trying to get proof of address, they don't have a lease. They don't have cable TV or gas, they're paying cash every week to live in a bedroom of a home. The school nurses have to review the immunizations. We've got, had a large number of people from Brazil come in, their immunization documents are, for the most part, in poor quality because they're paper and handwritten. Um, when you scan those in, oftentimes, they can't be read by the nurse. I know community, Lowell Community Health Center was translating, but I think they've hit the saturation point there. Um, so, we've gotta think about, particularly the Portuguese coming from Brazil, how do we figure out these immunization documents? Um, language testing and nurses screening for immunizations, how can we improve that, particularly to occur over the summer at a more aggressive level as children are registering? Um, as opposed to waiting the, the two weeks before school for the thirty-one days of here, it's never been an easy time. So, you know, think about that. Lowell High, I think we need a single person all summer to be, make sure they're looking at new registrations from Lowell High and making sure those requests for transcripts and I E Ps are going out. Rebecca and I met with, um, the high school this summer in July, and I've, I've got a credit for people. Rose Mendoza, who I just send an email to when a child is registered, Rose assigns them a house, I probably get an email response from her within a half hour. I always CC the family, the family member gets the response what house they've been assigned to. Allison Carbone and Renee Dagel from Special Ed and Jill Rothschild from Freshman Academy have been exceptional. I send Allison a, an I E P, she's on it and back to the family. So, that has worked well. Prior to them coming back to school, um, one of the questions was, why don't we just send the transcripts to the house office? Well, if we register anyone between the last day of school and the first day of school as a tenth grader, we don't know what house office they're gonna be in because Lowell High makes that assignment. So, we need a central location for those records and for families to send documents. Some families said, oh, I already sent them to Lowell High, and it's like, okay, who did you send them to? I don't know, I faxed them. So, yeah, you think about that.
I need, I hate to interrupt you, you're almost done, you just need to wrap.
Two more, three more points. The translators and the parent liaisons and Family Resource Center have been exceptional. I wanna make sure they stay as parent liaisons and they're not put in a situation where they're making decisions that administrators have to make. Um, I'm concerned about our Portuguese translator because she is busy from the moment she walks in there till the moment she leaves. District support specialists, we don't have them anymore. I'll give you two anecdotal situations. There was, I got an email, some parent and community agency had emailed that the kid was disabled and not in school. No phone number, no email. I made a home visit on my way home, it's a four-year-old who has an I E P from us and is in a wheelchair. I registered kid online that night, I've since gotten all the documents, he will be in school probably next week. Another parent came in, fortunately, he did the pre-registration, he asked the clerk, can my nephew get into school? The clerk made him wait and talk to me. He got custody of his nephew, the mother had died, the biological absentee father said to the uncle, you can have custody. Father's been, he's been unable to locate the father since that conversation. That kid moved from Boston to Lowell, defined him as an unaccompanied minor, got his records from Boston, sent the I E P to Lowell High, that child was in school in two days. So, it, there are a number of cases where we need that face-to-face assessment, and from someone who has some professional experience to differentially know what departments need to be involved. In closing, I strongly urge the committee, and I strongly urge the administration, to look at how we improve operations for children, families, and schools. In conclusion, to use a quote attributed to Mark Twain, "Every complex sol, problem has a solution that is simple, direct, plausible, and wrong." Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, thank you, Mr. McCosker. Uh, I, I think these are important pieces of information, uh, that, that really has to be looked at where we are at right now with those numbers that we had been told at the last meeting. Uh, I think we need to be dealing with that, and, and he's at least offering a lot of food for thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on the report? Ms. Martin?
So, can I ask, do we have the, the update of how many in this fourteen-nine number, um, are rep, are the, the resolution of the three hundred ninety-four?
So, if you look at on the report for the, in your packet, the second to last paragraph was, I'm not sure if that's the number you're looking at, but I believe the last time you were, the F R C category within your enrollment report, these are the students that are awaiting placement. The F R C category on your October one snapshot includes fourteen students who are awaiting placement, uh, and sixty-five students who are on the pre-K waitlist. Uh, again, uh, again, the pre-K waitlist is different than your K-12 placement, pre-K non-compulsory, families make decisions based on the program options that are available to them, so you'll continue to have a waitlist. So, as of this snapshot, there are fourteen, there were fourteen on the K through twelve, uh, assignment and placement list. There is, uh, Ms. Phillips can provide additional details, as can Ms. Duda, the committee has further questions beyond that.
Yeah, Ms. Martin?
I guess my next question would be is how we accommodated all those students in that two-week period? Where were they placed? How, how did that process work?
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Martin. So, largely, that was related to student immunizations, working in collaboration with the Lowell Health Department, they, uh, it included a significant increase in staffing hours and overtime and weekend work, as well as, uh, some additional work with the Health Department on a, on a revised protocol to ensure that we could get additional resources to families to help them, as you heard from Ms. McCosker about, uh, supporting families. So, Ms. Phillips, can you provide the details on how, how that work happened in collaboration with the Health Department?
Yes, so, school committee members, uh, Mr. Superintendent, the largest group were students who were non-medically cleared, um, so the nurses did put in overtime to do that first reading, um, and then the students were assigned to a school, and the school supported the follow-up with the families. Um, a lot of our families don't speak English who were in that category, and so there was a lot of explanation, um, to families of what the, what the, um, missing vaccinations were, where they could get the vaccinations, and, um, and that resulted in the students who were non-medically cleared, um, getting assigned to schools and the support they needed at the schools.
So, that, that number of students have all begun classes, they were registered and enrolled and began attending?
So, thank you, I think that's important, and I appreciate that clarification. No, that does not necessarily mean that. The committee does have a policy in state law around exclusion for immunization purposes, so, when you heard Ms. Phillips say medically cleared, if they were not medically cleared by the Health Department, they were notified as families that they are excluded due to that medical clearance, but the assignment to school, as Ms. Phillips was sharing, enables the school's support, the resources that are at the school... the resources that are at the school, social workers and so on, to help support the family with getting connected to their immunizations. But as of right now, we are abiding by the school committee's policy, which is an exclusion due to immunizations. So a student would receive a different type of letter. So we do have students that received a letter, and Ms. Phillips or Ms. Duda, please clarify if I'm being too short with the clarification, but the letter said something along the lines of, "Welcome to Lowell Public Schools. You are assigned to X school. However, based on a review of your medical records, you are not medically cleared to attend, so you cannot attend until you meet X, Y, and Z requirements." And then the school can work with the family to meet X, Y, and Z requirements, whatever those immunization requirements were. I'm looking at you, Dr. Duda. Is that pretty much a synopsis? Thank you, Dr. Duda.
Sure, Ms. Martin?
So with this finite group of students that we've now tracked for three to four weeks, can we get an update on how many are in which category? How many are assigned and yet still awaiting support? How many are assigned and actually attending? I mean, I think that, you know, we certainly voice concerns around the October 1 deadline. That is a perhaps somewhat craven but necessary thing for this committee to pay attention to, that, you know, funding will rise and fall based on what that number is on October 1. But ultimately, we are profoundly concerned about students now in October who haven't attended school. So I do think that tracking that process is going to be critically important, certainly for the administration and also for the committee. You know, my anticipated hope would be that by the time we meet next, 100% are placed, cleared, and attending. But if we could get that report, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, absolutely. Ms. Martin, absolutely, we can certainly do that for the committee for the next meeting.
Any other, Ms. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I would just say I agree with some of Mr. McCosker's comments, I think, and I appreciate the insight that he provided in terms of the operational difficulties that both our families and, as well as, it sounds like, you know, the complexities when a preregistration is happening. So that was very helpful to hear. I think that as we move forward, I think, I love the idea of the parent portal. If there, and I don't know if the products exist out there, but I think that is something that we should be looking into because it's good for our families to have options, but it would be nice for our families to have options and the ability to even check back in with their current status, you know, in a system that they can log into with one single email address for all of their children. I understand the reason why we would suggest that they use someone, send another email, but certainly that is not user-friendly and not ideal. But I understand there are difficulties with our systems that we currently have. And I think the other thing, just in looking forward, obviously, this year there are extenuating circumstances with the current pandemic. However, if there is a way that we think or a need that we plan for, I appreciate the idea that we should have someone at the high school all summer long looking at transcripts. But I think maybe the same goes for, you know, nurses and reviewing of immunization records. I'm not sure. I know some of the information we were provided last time showed that many of these people are people who are registering after the start of school. So, but would it help if we are really staffed or requesting that the Health Department is staffed or using external resources to provide that kind of backup so that when we are faced with the, you know, influx of students who may be, you know, coming in around the beginning of school, that we are in fact prepared, or as prepared as we can be, to, you know, to handle the complexities related to immunization records that might be in other languages? I mean, I think, I just am looking to see what can we do to improve the process going forward, you know, based on the feedback and experiences we've discussed here. So, but I appreciate the hard work. It does not sound easy at all. It sounds very complex, and I agree that it is the gateway, you know, the kind of welcome center, and I appreciate the work that that team is doing, the hard work, and all of the places that it goes from there, and all the people involved. So, thank you very much for that. But I think, you know, we are always looking to improve the process, and I think there's a few great ideas there we should definitely be looking into for future enrollment. Thank you.
And I do, just for clarification, I'm pretty sure when I spoke to the nursing staff, they are doing this all summer long. It just was the big influx at the beginning of the school year that slowed things down. So they do that all year round. Anybody else? Ms. Dougherty, any questions?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just want to make sure I emphasize something that I heard Mr. McCosker say, as well as Ms. Clark, which I came as a little bit of feedback from staff, and I want to make sure I emphasize. Staff is working extremely hard. The conversations of process improvement are about process improvement, organizational improvement. Dr. Duda, your work is recognized and valued, and I appreciate that. Please share that with the staff. Mr. McCosker, thank you for your support to supplement the staff and coming out of retirement to help the Family Resource Center.
I am. Am I still muted? Sorry.
Sure. Okay, Ms. Dougherty, yep.
Hello?
Thank you. Yep, we can hear you. Can you hear us?
Hello?
Yep. Can you hear us, Ms. Dougherty?
Oh, yes. I think I just blanked out for a minute. Thank you. I don't want to speak out of turn. If I can speak out, that's fine, or I can wait.
You're all set.
Thank you. I want to do also reiterate Dr. Boyd's comment. I know people have been working very hard, especially this scramble, to get as many students enrolled as possible for the October 1 date. And special thanks to all the staff across the district, especially our nurses. We had people coming in out of retirement, as I know Mr. McCosker has been out of retirement to help with the Family Resource Center and getting the kids enrolled. I am working overtime the whole bit. I do have a number of concerns and questions that I think we need to be looking at, and our goal, I believe collectively, is to do it better, right? I think that historically, we have put the paperwork in place before we enrolled the students. And I understand that we ran out of time, that when this committee found out, and I believe it was in September 23rd, whenever that meeting, that we had 394 students who hadn't been placed, that was, you know, more than $5 million. Most important is getting them into school. So I think that historically, we did the paperwork first, then we enrolled the students and registered them. We were not able to do that this time because we ran out of time. And I think looking at what were some of the factors that really, the systematic factors that needed to be changed, technology, training, whatever it was, to really be very open and clear about what those steps need to be. Now, I did speak with Beth Moffett today. She was not able to speak to us tonight, but we talked at length and we went over, I went over my notes with her about what were some of the points she wanted me to share from the perspective of the Health Department and the nurses. First of all, the Lowell Health Department follows mass DPH law that requires students cannot attend school unless their immunization records are verified and complete, except in cases where immunizations are against their religious beliefs and parents submit a signed letter of that, or they have documented medical exceptions, or they are McKinney-Vento, the homeless students are given an immediate seat with a 30-day extension. So from the perspective of the Health Department, they were working all summer. Problem was, two weeks before school started, they thought they had 96 records left that needed to be verified in terms of the immunization, when, like overnight, just before the October 1 deadline, the last week or so before that, well into the school year had started, there were another 300 names that showed up on their roster. And that was about the time, I think, that the committee became aware of it. So some of the issues were around inaccuracies, like the name not matching the name on the birth certificate, the immunization information being blank or not being translated, the immunization record not readable, like, and I think Mr. McCosker mentioned that, that if they had poor paper quality and it was scanned into the system, if the Family Resource Center couldn't read it, the nurses couldn't read it, wrong immunization document, like it was the immunization record of the parent or sibling, not the student. So some of these details, I do feel like it's important to get into the record because we have a lot of challenges that we're facing. And this isn't about pointing fingers, it's about how do we work together? Because I do believe it is our joint responsibility to provide the best service we absolutely can to our families. And the fact that we were able to pull it together as much as we did, that we're down to, I believe, the number on the report was 14 students, although we don't know how many are still not attending school because their medical information is not complete, and I look forward to getting that detail. I think the other piece to think about in terms of this was how this impacted the school. So here's where I've got some questions. My understanding is these students were distributed throughout the district, but what I heard was one school got 24, another school might have got 15, another school didn't get any. So I know we're very, we want to be equitable, we want to be fair, and I don't see how that's equitable for staff or students if these chunks of students, who many of them are ELL students, are newcomers, students without the immunization information, how that's being distributed? It should have been more fairly distributed because it puts that burden then on those schools to go after, help the families get the information they don't have. So I would like that to be included in the follow-up report, the answers to that question, how is that distributed? Also, I think that we have lost a lot of our institutional knowledge, that people who knew how to do it, they're either not here or they weren't being asked, and that when we're looking at the technology problems, like putting it in Google, the parent would put it in Google, and then it has to be reinput into Aspen, the X2 system, and that's where you'd have all kinds of duplication of time and potential for errors. And so my last question that I would like to have addressed in this follow-up report, if not tonight, is what about the translation services that we used in the past? That why was there such a problem with getting this immunization information translated when we have been a gateway city for a very long time? We have been taking in refugees for a long time. And I just want to understand, and if you don't have that answer tonight, I would be expecting that in the report, that how did we not be able to do that, those translations? So that when the nurses opened up the record, it had the immunization information in English for them instead of a blank field or not being translated. And I think these are some areas I'd be looking to see some real movement and improvement. And also, the word on the street is the Family Resource Center doesn't answer the phone, and I think that's a huge problem. We need to be accessible to our families. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments? Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I guess my final comment really would be, is there a recommendation from the administration as to how we can go through this review process? How we can kind of address the recommendations and concerns from people who've worked in the office, from families, from school leaders? It seems to me that this is something that warrants a group effort to track this progress over the course of the year so that when we come to June, we have what we feel is a better, stronger, faster system. So I'd be looking to the administration and maybe to Ms. Dougherty's point, if it's not tonight, maybe it's next, our next meeting, what the plan can be to kind of begin this process so that we can get a, you know, be able to see the situation as it is and then be able to make suggestions, more importantly, get suggestions from the families and the frontline staff who are dealing with this, so that we can kind of put our improvements together in a comprehensive way so that come next September, we don't find ourselves in this situation again.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Clark?
Thank you. I would just, you know, I said it before, but the parent portal, I think where we have opportunity to provide our families with self-service functionality, I mean, a lot of people, I think, would take advantage of that, you know, where possible. So I would, I definitely feel, I think I've already said it, and I believe the administration has heard, both from internal staff as well as the committee here, that that's definitely of interest to us because I feel like if there's opportunity for us to allow a family to be able to log into a system and check on the status of things, understand what's outstanding or what they might need, that that in fact would eliminate perhaps some of the need, definitely eliminate the need for families to place a phone call or need to talk to someone to really get information. It also might be an opportunity for a system to provide updates, you know, regularly through notifications. So I just, I feel like we're, again, where we can use technology and make sure that our technology is working and is user-friendly, because it doesn't sound like this situation with Aspen is a new issue. This sounds like it's a problem for any family that would have been doing a preregistration for a second child in the district. I mean, that's clearly an issue, a system issue, you know, that if they're not sitting across the table from a clerk, that we, you know, a person who can input multiple children at once, you know, I think we need to hold that vendor accountable and perhaps, you know, look for some other tools that could either replace or help and bolt on to the front end of that, if it's available. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. And I just wanted to add that, you know, in my dealings, as Mr. McCosker said about the high school, they're all working pretty hard there, too. And give a shout out to the clerk schedules because they've been doing a lot of, I guess, we've asked them to do a lot of extra work this year. So everybody is doing a lot more, and hopefully, this conversation leads us to a more efficient streamlining for next year. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make sure that we have clarity. So the, when you're seeing 14 students on that snapshot, that may not be a subset of the snapshot you are seeing on another date. Students come in every single day. So the students enroll in the system every day. The students you were seeing on September 20th were not the students that were there on the first day and missing the first, they enrolled after the first day. So there was some comment about how many students enroll on a particular day or how many may show up in the system. That's based on the number of students that enroll and register on a given day. How many students come to Lowell? And it's, Dr. Duda, would I be safe to say that every day, we're receiving students? It just depends on a given day as to whether it's a large volume, a high volume of students, or whether it happens to be a small volume of students. So whenever you take the snapshot, and Dr. Doodle provided to me, I believe, on one day, she gave me two different snapshots on two different days, or on the same day, just at two different times, it's completely different data from the morning till the afternoon. It just depends on when she pulls the report. So it's important to kind of identify that and understand that within the analysis here. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And that was something that Dr. Duda did flag for me before, so I hope I accurately conveyed that, Dr. Duda. Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
And I think to that point, absolutely, you can recognize how, you know, you're tracking, if you're tracking a snapshot, making comparisons can be really difficult. So that's when we really need to dig into the data and start looking at outcomes, true outcomes. What's the timeline? If a student of, you know, you should be able to track the length of time it takes from initial contact to complete enrollment. Now, there are going to be outliers, there are going to be probably the majority of families and students who get in and assigned and are at school, you know, in a minute, that they have everything ready, they use the technology, they're comfortable with it, and that's going to be by far the preponderance of our families. But I think being able to look at, you know, again, the kind of time on task that it takes for students so that we're not just looking at, there are 50 today and there are 70 tomorrow waiting, and the next day, there's 10. It's really a matter of being able to track of those students, what's the length of time it takes to get those students enrolled? That, again, data can only tell you so much. There are going to be certainly situations where the family is the challenge in getting the right information. Even just four pieces of information can be a challenge. But it does give us another metric to kind of guide the decision-making, to see, you know, that we're looking at the information in different ways so that we can get a fuller picture than just a snapshot of each day. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next report. MCAs?
Mr. Mayor, if you would, if you could, is it possible for me to take 9-3? Because I think that does get after some of what Ms. Martin was saying, which is, which was well-articulated. Would you mind if we take it out of order? Because my recommendation on 9-3, these are, Mr. Mayor, if that's okay with you?
Sure. Just motion to take things out of order. Just motion to take things out of order by Mr. Lay, seconded by Mr. Dillon. Sure. Nine, three.
The nine, three are your key performance indicators that we'll be monitoring strategically across the district, where certainly the, some of the indicators that Ms. Martin was just referencing could be part of this. This discussion is one that we typically, at least last year when we initiated our KPI review, we established those KPIs through a pretty thoughtful discussion during a subcommittee. You have a School Improvement and Performance Management Subcommittee. I would recommend that we refer the KPI discussion to that committee and that as soon as, I believe Ms. Martin's the chair and, uh, Mr. Skinner's the admin representative, as soon as they can come together around a schedule, that we have that thorough discussion so we can get those KPIs established for the committee as part of our regular continuous improvement process. Uh, so, Mr. Mayor, that, I would provide that as a recommendation if the committee's so obliged to make it as a motion.
Remind me, Mr. Superintendent, so when we, I know that when we did this for the first time last year, we had quarterly, we were looking at quarterly updates. So if we were able to, you know, I'm just thinking timing, if we were able to get this to happen in the next couple of weeks, would we then be able to look at a November report?
I believe that's-
For the first quarter? I mean, I, I know we're kind of backing into it, but-
I believe that's our goal. Mr. Skinner, that's, that was your, that's the plan, correct? If we can get these established, that you would be ready to go right at the end of the quarter with a share open update?
Yes. On the memo that the committee received in the packet, it indicates, um, for, for each of the KPIs, uh, how many times a year and when you should receive a report. And were we to make any adjustments to it, we would add those items in and we would commit to a certain report out of time.
Perfect. So we'll work through your office, uh, Mr. Superintendent, to schedule that as soon as we can. Thank you.
All right. So did you, you, so you wanted to accept the motion of, uh, where am I? Motion to refer the 2021, 22 key performance indicators, School Improvement and Performance Management Subcommittee? Yep. Okay. So move. All right. Uh, Ms. Um, Clark first, and then you got a question? No? Okay.
She's seconded.
Oh, you seconded. Okay. All right. All right. So back to MCAS then?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the Spring MCAS results. You received this report, uh, previously. It was a request to put it also to the agenda here for public discussion. So I'm referring it to you as a report of progress, and Mr. Skinner's available to answer any questions the committee may have.
Any questions on the MCAS thing? Okay. So motion to accept the, uh, report. Ms. Martin? Yeah.
I'm sorry, I, I do think it would be really helpful for, for, uh, Mr. Skinner to share with us kind of executive summary of the results, and then if there are any specific questions of, of specific topic areas.
If you don't mind, Mr. Skinner?
Thank you. The results themselves are in the, in the memo that you received in the packet. What I'm tempted to share with you is that, um, i- is how we compare with others and, and, uh, and that in part because I believe we compare favorably. We're not encouraged this year to make a great deal of comparisons because, um, if we compare with other cities or other districts, um, the results depend to some extent on the participation rate. However, um, Ms. Anderson, who directs the data office, provided me with some data at my insistence, though she was cautioningly about the comparison issue. I've reviewed data from Lawrence, Lynn, Springfield, Boston, Brockton, Fall River, Worcester, and Fitchburg, and the first comparison, I believe the most important one, is actually the participation rate. So in those other towns and cities that we oftentimes are compared with or in that cohort with, the participation rates varied from 55%, a low of 55% in, um, Lawrence, to a high of 91% in Lynn. Lowell compare, compares favorably, um, with 83% participation in ELA. This is at the 10th grade, the high school level, and 85% participation in math. So, understanding the caution around participation rates and what proportion of those students participated in the remote test versus the in-person test and so on, the 10th grade results, the achievement scores for Lowell High School in ELA and math are the highest of all those towns and cities I've mentioned. And, uh, I can speculate, I think that, uh, being a school leader during much of that time, I've witnessed really remarkable dedication and skill on behalf of teachers, I think deserve a lot of credit for this. So too the school leaders who did everything from feeding students to, um, visiting homes. And so too, I think, is a lot of credit due to the administration because, um, we were ahead in many respects on how to manage through the pandemic, particularly, I would say, around technology. I have a friend who's a technology director in another district, and they thought that they were on board with what they needed to do, ordering Chromebooks and so on. They're about two months behind Lowell in that effort, and they struggled to last year until February to get their district of, I think it was, uh, some of the, I think maybe 5,000 students, um, to get Chromebooks, one-to-one Chromebooks, whereas we had that established last summer, and I think, uh, none of it, none of it was smooth and none of it was without stress. But those provisions were made, and I think the data for me shows that that made a big difference.
Thank you. Any other comments on this? Jackie? Ms. Dougherty, have a question?
Yes, thank you. And through you to, um, Mr. Skinner. I'm, I'm interested in, um, I know that MCAS is not being used as a graduation requirement and, and justifiably so, especially given the, the last two years we've had. But I'm interested in how the district is going to use this data. And maybe it wouldn't be you, maybe it would be Ms. Desmond who could answer better. But how is the information helping to inform, um, wh- where we need to go, what the losses have been for our kids, and what's going to be the focus going forward to help make up some of those losses? How would that information help with that? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Skinner?
If I could, I just want to-
Sure.
Thank Ms. Dougherty. I think that's the exact right question when you have this data come because there's, there's very limited use for the data, the most, in terms of at an aggregate level. The most important is how do we use it at a student level? How do we use it to support our students? And, Mr. Skinner, if you can share, uh, Mr. Skinner just has been in conversations and working through support for our principals on how we use this data. So, Mr. Skinner, if you could?
Sure. Thank you. Just this week on Monday, Ms. Anderson, again, who I've referred to, the director of our data office, met with principals at the daily school and instructed them on use of MCAS data and what sort of analysis might be useful. Principals, of course, many of them are very accustomed to that work at any rate. So there's several ways to make use of the data, and some of it on a, on a broader scale, you can notice certain weaknesses in programs. If you have wonderful data indicate that they did relatively well in geometry and not so well in, uh, measurement, for example, you may find programmatic changes or, or strengths and weaknesses that you can act on. But as Dr. Boyd said, the most important analysis done, is done at a student level. And so, um, this year, the data's not quite as useful because students didn't take the full test, they took parts of the test. Each student was given just one out of two tests. And still you can find weaknesses there, and you can, uh, cross-reference the data you find from the MCAS with other data that we have from iReady or other sources. So it can still be a point that helps you, um, identify students who you need to look at more closely. So, uh, Ms. Anderson has helped principals start that work, and that's ongoing in our
Is that good?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty? Okay.
Um, could I follow up?
Sure. Follow up.
I'm wondering, when we look at, uh, some of our subgroups, our students of color, our Latinx students, and we're seeing, um, large numbers, large percentages that, um, aren't meeting the progress that we expect to reach, are we seeing those achievement gaps, uh, growing, uh, because of the last two years? And, and what are we attributing that to? More importantly, how are we going to work to offset it?
Mr. Skinner?
There's a breakdown in the report that you received in the packet that breaks down the data by numerous, uh, in, in numerous ways, one of them by, uh, race and by other factors as well. The achievement gap is an ongoing problem. We don't see it, um, we, we, we don't have enough information to judge whether it's widened during the pandemic or not. It's not likely that it has, uh, that it has improved, but, um, it's an ongoing problem that we're addressing, yes.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, I'll take it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other discussion on MCAS? Um, okay. Motion, uh, motion to accept the reports nine, one through nine, three, as a report of progress by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Dillon. Home education?
This is a procedural report of notification to the committee. Uh, the recommendation is to accept the report as a report of progress.
Any questions on home education, Mr. Dillon?
Uh, no, just motion to approve.
Okay. Motion approved by Ms. Dillon, seconded by Ms. Clark. New business?
Mr. Dillon?
Roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Uh, new business. Vote to accept the donation of 750, 750-
That's being referred to the next school committee.
Okay. So the donation is deferred to the next school committee meeting. Uh, 10-2, budget transfer. Any questions on the budget transfer? Seeing none. Motion to approve the budget transfer of $5,000 by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Dillon. Roll call?
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Okay. 10-3, Mr. Superintendent, consideration of options to increase substitute teaching pool, teacher pool.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, each committee meeting, you're going to be seeing these types of analyses come to you as, as we learn of the continued impact of the pandemic. And you may recall from our last conversation at the last committee meeting, one of the, um, significant impacts that we're experiencing this year and districts in every industry across the country is experiencing are staffing shortages. Uh, at the prior meeting, you made an adjustment to wages for cafeteria staff around the shortages that were experienced here. Uh, Ms. Turner has done a, an analysis for you within your packet around the substitute shortage. The substitute pool here in Lowell significantly lower than what that pool of candidates typically is. You have a pool of eligible candidates. From that pool, a number may accept, uh, an assignment on a given day. It's never 100% of the pool. Typically, that pool is in the range, Ms. Turner, of 400. This year, uh, the impact of the staffing shortages has our pool at just 80. That is not a sufficient pool to meet the needs of our schools, and certainly not during the course of a pandemic where we still work through quarantining and positive tests. While fewer, we still experience that. So we have increased absences, a smaller pool, and again, you should expect these types of analyses coming to you. As soon as we have a recommendation for the committee's consideration, we'll bring it to you. Uh, this here is some guidance that we need from the committee. Ms. Turner can walk you through it, uh, but there are a few options available to you. We would like the guidance of the committee, and hopefully we would like to act on that guidance immediately. So I would ask, in addition to guidance, if we can take it in the form of a motion, get the recommendation so we can act on it. Ms. Turner, uh, can summarize the recommendations. If the committee wants to walk through the analysis, which is pretty extensive, she can also do that. Uh, Mr. Mayor, would you like her just to summarize the recommendations, or would you prefer a summary of the analysis as well?
Yeah. What do you, so I'm a, yeah, if you could just go through it briefly, because I'm a little confused on the first key. I don't know what that relates to, so if you could go over that, sure.
Thank you. We, we can do. Um, Ms. Turner, perhaps this, uh, recommendation, what led to the recommendation, and so that you can walk them through, so that way I think you can help summarize what those data points are and what led to your recommendations. Mr. Mayor, if that'll work for you?
Yeah. Yep.
Ms. Turner?
Okay. I'm not sure what you mean when you say the first key, so I'll just, um, explain some, um, findings and then share my recommendations. In FY 1819, we did go back two years, being that COVID, um, data is, um, not useful. Two years ago, we had 75% of our absences covered and 70% the year before. So within those two years, you could, you would only have 25 to 30% uncovered absences. But right now, the current data, now we, we've only had a few weeks of school, but the current data is showing 37% covered, so 63% of absences are uncovered. And just as, um, one piece of data that was available with the ASOP software program, that 40% of the, um, 40% of our absences are due to sick days, 22.6 is due to maternity leaves, the rest are because of bereavement, jury duty, uh, medical leave, religious holidays, and PD. As the superintendent explained, we had 400 subs on the list before, now we only have 81. Absences have already, um, increased by 33% when you compare it, um, at this same time period two years ago. So not only do you have increased absences, but less of a pool to work with. So that made us look at what types of things we could possibly do to try to increase the subpool and get coverage for the teachers.
And just to inter, to interject, so just so people don't get the wrong idea, we have all, why are we having all these absences with COVID or with, it's not, you know what I mean? We don't want people to think that people are just taking days off, right?
Right. That's exactly. Like I said, 40% just based upon the ASOP software tracks the reasons behind why people are calling in, and if you add maternities and sick days, that's 60-something percent of the absences are due to sickness or maternity leave. Uh, one thing that we did, we, we came up with two ideas-
May I pause for a second? Because I, I think, I think I'm hearing what the mayor's saying. These are legitimate reasons why people, why individuals are out. These are unavoidable reasons of why somebody might be out. So there, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
So the two, there, there are, um, a few options that we need you to consider. We are not 100% certain they're going to make a difference, but we feel like it's our good faith effort to, you know, show the teachers that we're going to try to address it in whatever way we can find with the information we have now. One, one way would be to increase the rate, as we did with the food service people, increase the hourly rate to, I mean, by $2.50. The current $80 a day for a non-degreed sub equates to $13 an hour. The $105 a day, um, rate for retired teachers equates to $17.50 per hour, even though an active teacher makes over $70 an hour when you, when we're, when we're looking at averages. So if we did an increase of $2.50 per, um, sub category, this would equate to $230,000, which we could put onto the ESAR, um, we could amend the ESAR grant and put it under there as addressing learning loss. Another option would be hiring building subs. We could, we looked at what the average rates for permanent building subs. So instead of just having someone show up daily for a new assignment, we could assign a building sub per school. This does not solve the problem because if you have one school that has five absences, one building sub can't solve that entire problem. But at least if we have one that's committed to each of the schools, which we would think use, um, a pilot program and try 10 for this current year and track the data more, you know, to see if it works. But if we did one at each of the Renaissance school and, um, schools and three at the high school, being that they have three sizes of population, then we could watch the data and see if it does help in any way, shape, or form. An alternative to that, instead of charging $35,000 for a building sub, which is an average rate, we're in the top 10 in the state of Massachusetts, we could do the $35,000 per building sub plus fringe, which would equate to 4, 42,000 each, which is 420,000. Or we could hire 10 additional pairs right now that would be used at the schools, serving in a float, in, um, instead of serving in one classroom. They- in a float, instead of serving in one classroom. They would be there specifically for the purpose of filling in for teachers when they're not there. That is a more expensive option, because after the 15-day waiting period, they go from, they jump up to a first-year teacher salary, which is 48,000 approximately. So you have two options at that, you know, with the building sub model. Do the paras, hire the 10 additional paras, or hire 10 building substitutes. And just so you know, the ASOP software does have the capability of us tracking by school, so that instead of just assuming it's the Renaissance schools that need the substitutes the most, we could actually track by which schools have the most unmet need. And then it would let me give you more information next year that we can make better decisions with.
If I could on, on that, we do believe that both recommendations would be advisable to the committee. I did talk with Mr. Georges as these additional positions, if we were to add them, would be UTL-represented positions. The para position is one that you currently have. It is a slightly increased cost, but that's a position that you currently have. That would be my recommendation in conversation with Mr. Georges. If we went in the other direction of creating a new position of a building sub, we would have to take the additional time to work in collaboration with UTL, in discussion with UTL. If we go in that direction, it would seem to make the most sense for our students, for our schools, to go in the expedited fashion of posting the job that we already currently have, even though it is a, an additional cost. Right now, we're talking about time and time being of importance here, and we would recommend that direction. You all told Ms. Turner, if you could, for the two recommendations, both the wage increase as well as the additional 10 paras, given that we have to include the cost differential of them acting as a teacher. What's that total cost, Ms. Turner, that would, of those two items?
So if we went with the para option, which is 48,000, let's say it's 60,000 with fringe, so 60,000 times 10 is 600,000, plus the 230 for the increased rate for the substitutes would be 830,000. And this is something that we wanted to point out. These are all eligible for ESSER funding, which, by the way, it was approved today. So I'm really happy about that, so we can start working with it. We would have to file for an amendment, because the, as you know, we had $14.5 million set aside for facilities. But when we made decisions not to fill certain roles, we threw it all into a facility bucket, which equaled the 15.3 that was referenced in a previous meeting. We would have to amend the, the grant to take some of those funds to fund the substitutes, being that we don't have it budgeted in the local accounts.
Joe, Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I mean, this is, sounds like an immediate need and can provide relief to the buildings right away. And I, you know, when I first heard that we're, we would be dipping into that ESSER account that is, you know, right now is set for facilities, I think we also need to think about that, that facility's number that we really need is a really big number. And so when we're talking about, you know, maybe the amount of money here, an $800,000 ballpark number, I think can be very beneficial to using for this reason right now. And I like the recommendations. I think we should increase the rate of pay per day. And I, I think I like the idea of trying a building-type substitute, or, you know, an extra position to fill, that can fill classes. So I would be, I think I would be on board with, with all of these recommendations. Thank you.
Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm just curious as to why we're not seeing any numbers of what Drakett is, or Bilreka, or Chelmsford, all of our surrounding communities, that are probably those communities that are drawing off the people that would normally come to Lowell, because we are so low, and I think we're low. And I think we need to really hike it up in order to attract them away from Bilreka, Drakett, and Chelmsford, because the people will go there. If there's more money, they'll go there. And I think you can't bait them or try to get them here on the cheap. I'm sorry, we have to, I think we have to bite the bullet and really just give them a really substantial, by our standards, substantial increase in their pay. Seriously, thank you.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I agree with my colleagues that we should raise the rate that we're paying our substitute teachers. However, I don't think, I, I would not support doing these building-based subs at this time, because I don't think that that's equitably offering relief to all our schools by singling out the Renaissance schools, which I know the Renaissance schools are in need of assistance and help. They, I believe they also have higher staffing models because they are Renaissance schools. They also have additional funds because they are Renaissance schools. So I would prefer to look at increasing the rate. We're already in the top 10 in what we pay, which is good. We need to go higher. I agree. We should pay our substitutes higher. But I think that by creating this, these building positions, we're adding benefits, right? So that increases the cost. And I don't think we're fairly sharing that resource, because we're going to be targeting, out of the 10, the seven would go to the Renaissance schools. So what about the other schools that are also experiencing shortages with substitutes? So my preferred approach would be to raise the rate, whatever seems like a fair increase, and look at that, and maybe get a report in another few months if we're seeing improvement or if there's not problems with that. My other concern is, we just voted earlier this morning, this, in this meeting tonight, that we are committed to keeping that money for facilities, that 15.2 million. I believe that was not all the ESSER funding that we got. That was one piece of it that we set aside for facilities. I'd be looking for suggestions of other places to find that funding, not in the facilities budget. As we know, there are many, many, many needs. It's been a long time that our facilities have needed repair and maintenance. And my, my last point is really a question, and I don't know that Ms. Turner could answer, but I'm hoping somebody over there can, in the administration can tell us. How many open positions do we still have for teachers? And how many open positions do we still have for paras currently, today, October 6? So if someone could give me that information, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, Mr. Superintendent?
Dr. Hall, do you have that on the top of your desktop there, or would you need more time to be able to provide that under separate cover?
I'd need the time to look it up to be accurate, but I believe it to be under five right now for teachers.
Could you just speak up, 105?
Under five.
Under five, yeah.
Under, under, for teachers.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
And how many, how many paras? Do we have all our para positions filled?
I'm sure there's a rally about five to 10, Ms. Doherty, but again, I'm, I don't have that information right now. I'd have to look it up to be accurate.
Okay, that'd be great if you could provide it for us at the next meeting. But I think if we're looking for immediate relief, which we absolutely need, the best way is to up the prices that we're paying subs, because you know, we're living in a world now that these kind of positions where you can work when, when it's convenient for you, that, you know, that, that I think is, is become the new work model, that, that perhaps just increasing the, the rate would provide us with some relief without focusing just on these seven, or actually eight schools, because the high school is going to get three. I just don't see the building piece as equitably sharing that resource across the district. And I know that all the schools are hurting for substitutes. So I would strongly recommend going in, increase the hourly rate for now, and then let's revisit it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I mean, we can't go more than 10 minutes without saying equity around here. And, you know, this was described to us as a pilot program, it sounds like, right? And it would provide relief for the rest of the district also, just because these buildings in particular are getting a permanent subposition. It's also a subposition in the district that is being filled, that's helping to necess, you know, helping to distribute subs around the district. So I, I would find it, you know, not in our best interest that we say the word equity, and we say that this is not fair somehow to certain buildings or schools. I mean, it's a pilot program. It's going to provide relief for the entire district throughout the city. And if we keep trying to go to this, you know, nobody can have anything, that everybody else doesn't have thought process, then we're never going to get anywhere. So I, you know, I'm supporting it still. Thank you.
Ms. Clark?
Thank you. I think that this is an innovative idea to provide a building sub. I think that I agree with my colleague, Mr. Dillon, that I think this being a pilot program is an important way for us to approach this, and then we can evaluate. Is it useful? Is it helping us? I agree, it also helps if we are providing subs that are in building for the remainder of the school year. It does alleviate the need for subs, because the subs, the standard kind of sub can then go to the other schools that also have needs, and we know they have needs. But I do think that this makes good sense, especially at this point in time where we are hearing you say this is a need, and it's not just here in Lowell, it is other districts that are struggling. You know, we can see that number from the pool. And while I appreciate there are some people who would prefer to operate on that, you know, day-by-day basis, and that's fine. We, we obviously have opportunity for that as well. I think providing an opportunity for someone to join the district in a full-time capacity with benefits is also appealing for, for folks, and I think that would be an attractive model. I think it's worth giving it a shot as a pilot and then, and evaluating whether it's useful. And I appreciate, Ms. Turner, your idea that, you know, as we're tracking these going forward, we can really use that data to identify where are we seeing greater absences. But we do know that these, the Renaissance schools, we've identified them as perhaps needing, they do need additional, additional resources, and certainly a substitute at each of them, plus three at the high school. We know there's at least one teacher out every day, and probably three at the high school on a daily basis. So this is definitely meeting a need, and I think that it is also meeting the needs of the other schools, because it alleviates that need at, at these, these schools that won't necessarily need to be calling, calling the sub on a daily basis. So I support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martin and Ms. Lay?
Thank you very much. You know, first off, off the top, I do think the increase in, in the pay rate makes perfect sense. You know, that hasn't been touched in far too long. So I think, you know, just to get us competitive, that, that's an important first step. I think the idea of a pilot to see what works best, I'm absolutely, you know, I'm open to that. My question kind of falls in the realm of, do we do teachers or do we do paras? If we're creating a new job description for substitute teacher, that will obviously have to fall in line with our existing, you know, union agreements. The same is true, obviously, for paras, which would be at a, you know, after 15 days, obviously, they go into a teacher rate. I don't know if that after 15 days is in one position, or if it would still count within the same school. Personally, I wouldn't have a problem with that, but it's just, there are questions that will need to get answered. And the other kind of, I guess, end game question I have is, at the conclusion of this school year, I mean, we obviously have no idea what next year looks like. Are there going to be unemployment costs that are associated with laying these people off? Do they get absorbed into other positions? You know, just kind of keeping in mind that, you know, 60,000 as a, as a round number, certainly the benefits, an important part of that, but there could also be unemployment costs at the end of that, that I, and I'm, it's been a while since we've had those numbers, but I, so I'm not sure what the, if it's 33% or something like that, that can be the cost of eliminating a position and laying somebody off.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Joe, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Ms. Martin. I think that, that's part of the analysis of saying that while it is an increased cost perhaps for the para position, we know with, in here, it's a smaller number, it's 10, just through attrition, if you weren't choosing to keep these positions, you wouldn't, you wouldn't bear necessarily the cost of unemployment. You're not looking to lay off 10 paras. In, in all likelihood, through attrition, you're going to have 10 openings. If you create a new position, however, you may very well, as a committee, choose to discontinue that position, and that would cause that challenge. Also, what you're looking at here, when you, when you look at a pilot with it, you know, 10 is certainly not going to meet the need across all schools. It does alleviate some of it, some of the stress on the substitute pool. So Mr. Dillon is accurate there. It does benefit all schools to have these full-time positions. And with it being just 10, you're also very, very low risk as a pilot, whereas if we were recommending to you 30-plus of these positions, you know, that would be a high-risk proposition with us out, in order to test the data. So you do mitigate that with the para position, as well as it just being 10. And all you're doing here is mitigating risk within the pilot, because we don't know what next year holds, but we have high confidence based on our trend data in that case.
Just one last question, too. My, my sense would be the, another differential between a substitute teacher versus a para professional is that the education requirements would have to be met for a teacher. Is that, I mean, I, maybe we could work that out, but it seems to me that, you know, there's a difference between a full-blown substitute teacher and a para who can move into the role in terms of what your educational and licensing requirements would be.
Mayor?
Superintendent?
So if you're identifying them for substitute coverage, which is working in floating coverage, the substitute credential is vastly different than the teacher credential. So your para professional criteria would meet that credentialing requirement within substitute, but they couldn't transition then into a full-time teaching position. If at the end you wanted to, as a committee, you said the data's not compelling enough here, we want to discontinue this program, they would move into a para position. They wouldn't move into a teacher position. With that said, as we're discussing, if they are serving in the teaching role, our forecast and our parameters that we're providing you within the budget assumes that they're going to be serving as a teacher through this year. So we are projecting for you, and Ms. Turner's projecting the cost as if they're serving as, as a teacher role for those 15 days, so that you're, you have the full budget exposure accounted for by making the decision here tonight. So it, it gives you the utmost flexibility. It create, it mitigates as much risk as possible in, in future budget exposure while still allowing you to do as much as you can today with the information in front of you to alleviate the stress that these shortages are causing on our schools and to meet our students' needs.
All set?
Just in terms of a final recommendation, that I mean, my sense, I would be leaning towards the para professional model, but I, just in terms of giving some direct feedback.
Yeah, our recommendation is to, is to post them as para professionals at the same time that you account for the budget exposure of them serving in a teacher role, which is a different differential. That's the, that's the number that Ms. Turner presented. That also, in talking with Mr. Georges, that's the quickest way for us to expedite and get the support out to schools. So that would also be in the, in the conversation that I had with him prior to the meeting as well, might be the direction that he'd recommend as well.
All right. Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Just want to commend Superintendent for recognizing that the substitute salary wage has been very low for the, for the longest time. So I'm so glad that you take this initiative to increase that rate. However, I don't know if by just increasing the rate alone would all of a sudden make people want to apply to Lowell. So I wonder if there would be another, a second thing to attract the applicants.
Mr. Mayor?
Joe, I didn't know, there's a question there, Mr. Superintendent?
It's, yeah, I don't know if the superintendent have any other plans on top of just increasing the rate alone.
Mr. Mayor, so this is your first, first step at it. It's, I think, and I think you see in Ms. Turner's report, we know that it's going to, that just, the committee just taking this step and taking this vote here tonight is not going to solve the entirety of this particular challenge. It's the best that we can recommend to you tonight, Mr. Lay, and we're going to continue to study it, analyze the data, and bring back to you additional recommendations going forward. An example of that is, we took some steps in transportation. It doesn't solve all the challenges. You'll see another recommendation here for transportation again tonight. You're going to see these recommendations continue to come to you as we have the data and as we feel we're ready to make a recommendation. So you likely will see substitute pool coming back to you at a later meeting as we get additional data and as we see whether, how well this is alleviating the concerns that we're currently seeing. So it will come back to you, Mr. Lay, but this is the best recommendation we can provide to you tonight, and we'll then study the data as we see the impact of this decision tonight. You're absolutely right, though. It is not going to, this is not a magic wand solution here with your decision tonight, but it should improve the situation.
All right. Who was first? Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I'm probably the oldest person in the room that remembers back in the day when there were full-time substitutes in a building at the high school. They had at least a half a dozen full-time substitute teachers that were assigned to the high school. That, that's what, they showed up every day, and they knew they were going to be filling in classes. So I think it's, it's, it's a great idea to bring it back, to, to help us ease this situation, because it's, it's really critical, I think. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to clarify a couple of things before everyone else goes, so can you come up? All right.
Sorry. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Okay, so I'm just trying to follow along here. So where are we with, so we have two budget accounts, right? One for long-term subs and one for day-to-day. So we're going to, we're going to wipe that out, that's why we're doing this, or where are we with the money?
Ms. Turner?
We would continue to use day-to-day subs. Long-term subs is when you hire people that fill a long-term role.
Right.
The day-to-day sub, I've been tracking the data, like what's actually charged to Munis. We would continue to use that, but if we do an increase, we could offset, so the $230,000 in the increased rate for subs, we could charge to ESER if we needed to. I wouldn't actually charge ESER until I saw that we had a need. You get, so in, in other words, if we ended up using less than the $1.2 million in day-to-day subs, and because there aren't enough to go around, you know, there aren't enough of them, then I would just charge the general fund and let the ESER dollars flow forward to next year. It's just, I was giving you the opportunity, you know, when you have to say, how would we pay for this? I was letting you know that even if we could not, even if we did use the full $1.2 million for day-to-day subs, we could charge the extra to ESER. And as far as the building subs, that would be charged to ESER unless we had a surplus again this year and could use extra dollars, like vacancy savings or something like that. So I wouldn't, because when you charge it to a grant and you reimburse, you get reimbursed monthly, I wouldn't move the cost over to the grant until I saw that there was a need to do it.
Okay, so where are most of the, you said maybe maternity leave, right? But where are we having, why are we having a shortage of day-to-day subs? Is it maternity leave, or is it just, there's not enough people out there in the pool that are coming in?
It dropped from 400 to 81, and it's a nationwide shortage. Other districts across the country are trying to analyze the same thing. What they did say is there was an exodus from education during COVID, that a lot more people were retiring during the COVID period. Everyone's perplexed by this.
Okay, so my question is-
The question, Mr. Mayor, is it this, so that I can frame it, because all I'm hearing you is saying the shortage in why the subs, it's largely due to fewer subs available.
Okay.
We do have increased absences, but the large issue here is the shortage of subs available.
Okay, so my question is, if we just raise the rate, doesn't the problem take care of itself? Because if someone is comparing $18 in Lowell and $16 in Chelmsford or Drakeett, they're just going to stay in Lowell. And if they work every day in Lowell, isn't there a breaking point where if you work X amount of days, you become a permanent teacher anyways?
It's, the challenge, I think, is the significant drop in the pool. So just raising the rate is necessary, but the current analysis that Ms. Turner conducted, the assumption here is that just, that raising the rate is not going to fill that type of significant deficit that's currently within the substitute pool, because we're also seeing it across the nation. So even school districts that have a higher rate are also still experiencing the substitute shortage pool. So you will solve some of it, because as you put forward, if, if somebody is choosing another district because of the rate, now when they see Lowell has a similar rate, they'll choose Lowell instead.
Yeah.
We anticipate that will occur, but it won't be enough to solve the full entirety of it. So we do think the, kind of the dual approach would be beneficial, but-
And what's, I'm kind of missing the point, what's the dual approach? Hire them as a, hire them as a para?
You're doing both ends, yeah, you're having, we're raising the rate, one, and two, we're also hiring 10 additional paras to serve as building substitutes. So you're, you're solving 10 right off the bat, and then by raising the rate, we can get an additional fill, an additional fill rate for whatever vacancies exist beyond those 10. And every single day, we have more than 10 absences, so I want to make sure, so the 10 won't, so-
And it's been my experience that certain people like to work at the high school, and they have an average rate of 17 people a day out. So they just stay at the high school anyways, and they, and they fill in every day. So I imagine that happens at all the, all the schools, right? People like working at the Riley, and they just wait for the call every morning, and they go to the Riley.
Yeah, you do, you definitely see that in substitute behavior,
Yeah.
that they have, that some subs will have a preferred building. Here, we're seeing, though, at some, in some cases, I was at two schools the other day, and neither of the schools had any subs that accepted their positions on that particular day. One school reported that they haven't seen any subs pick it up, other than one day they had subs show up otherwise. Because what you'll do, teachers will, a teacher's ill, Mr. Dillon, he's ill in the morning, he puts in for a substitute, and then whether a substitute accepts that opening or not is determined based on sub behavior. And some schools haven't, haven't seen substitutes available to even take the absences at all.
But this plan that we're talking about doesn't really solve that need either, right?
Yeah, no plan is going to be 100% bulletproof on solving it. This was our best recommendation so that we can address it, and we will have to come back with the data we gather as to whether it's having the intended impact, which is why we're suggesting that we do both. And then we see what's having the greater impact, and we move in that direction further.
All right, so just so I understand, too, if we hire these 10, what are they going to be called? 10 day-to-day substitutes?
Mr. Dr. Hall, how would we, how would it be posted? They're para-professional positions, but what would we post it as to, would it be a parenthetical on the posting? What would it look like, Dr. Hall?
It would be posted as a para-professional with a parentheses saying substitute, daily substitute.
And that allows you to not have building rights, but you can float around wherever you want to go?
Conceptually, Mayor, I think we would keep the people at the schools to just provide continuity with the education there. So if we knew, like, for example, as you said, the high school had 17 vacancies a day, we could keep three there every single day to plug in classes.
So I, I'm not trying to be thick-headed on this, but why don't we just say we want to hire three more people at X amount of buildings? That's what we're doing, we're just adding staff to certain buildings, we're not really filling substitutes, we're just adding staff to buildings that, so what's the difference? Yeah, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Ms. Turner, it seems like she's eager to answer that question, Mr. Mayor.
No, I'm only eager because I, I thought the same thing when I was going through the process. I actually said in the, I, I said in the group that why wouldn't we just hire the same sub every day, and then we'll save on the insurance?
Right.
But as Ms. Clark said, we will, we're hoping, we're trying to just show the schools that we're willing to try to do anything right now to help alleviate this problem with not having subs. So what we're hoping is, just like some people like the day-to-day sub rule, because they can come pick and choose when they want to work, others may feel like, wow, it's a benefited job where I'm getting a salary for the year, and I'm going to get benefits, so they may like that. We're just trying, we're grasping at straws on a, a problem that's shared across the country, and we're just trying to give you any ideas, like, that's why we said a pilot program, just to see if it works. So we're, we're going to try increasing the rate to see if we can increase the number of people that want to come in day-to-day. But we're also going to off, if you chose, we could offer a job that had the benefits and see if that attracts more subs. So we're just trying any ideas that come to mind.
All right, I'm just leery about pulling the money out of the schools, because that's been a problem for, since I can remember. We have to fix the HAV, the HVAC systems, we have to fix the controls. We had somebody here, well, probably at the city council meeting, talking about the controls at the Maury School. I mean, these are problems that have been hampering us for years and years and years, and that really affects the quality of education. We've got to really commit that money to fixing these problems. If there's a way to save money and get the day-to-day subs in, or whatever we want to call it, hiring more people, we should be doing that. But we can't lose our focus on the, on these problems that have been plaguing us in our schools, and we committed to fix them, and I, and we have to fix these problems. So I really don't want to use any of the money committed to the physical buildings. Is there a way we can solve this issue without taking any money out of that? Sure.
I strongly suspect, but this is something, I'm just being safe right now, I do feel as though we had more retirees last year. And when you have a retiree leave, if they, let's assume they're making $90,000, and we hire them back at 50, that, that's a savings of $40,000 when you hire a brand-new sub. I mean, not sub, a brand-new teacher. We had over 70-something retirees last year, 31 of them were teachers. So even if I estimate, even when I estimate how much we are expecting in savings from teachers, I think we do have an, you know, a chance to cover it with the general fund. But I'm being safe right now and saying, oh, well, we could put it on the ESER. But again, when I, when I was explaining earlier that I won't charge the ESER grant unless we absolutely need it to. If you said right now I had to decide whether or not we have it, I don't know right now if we're going to. I know that the projection I did for this month shows that we will have a savings in salaries already, because we have vacancy savings, a lot of people that were hired later in the year. But because I don't know what happens throughout the rest of the year, I can't guarantee that. But I'm pretty confident that based on the last couple of years, I just got a feeling, you know, like I get the, I can watch and see what's happening, I think we'd be able to cover it with the general fund.
I just want to stress, we're never going to get this chance again to fix the physical plant, the schools, and we got to take advantage of that while the money's available. Thank you. Is there any follow-up to that? Mr. Dillon, do you have a question?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, glad you're not sitting next to me anymore. But have we, have we heard from the city on the city's contribution towards any of those facilities improvements?
I don't know the number, but I know that we're all committed to try to put this good money to use and get these projects fixed up, so.
Well, because I, I agree, you know, that this is stuff that we have to put forward, and it's, we've had to for 30 years. The city's got to be on board, too. You know, we don't want to take any money out of this, this pool, but, I mean, you know, this is, that facility's fund is money that we don't have to put into facilities, you know? And we're, we're stepping up and we're doing that, so we, you know, we also want the city to, to be on board as well, you know?
I think the city is going to step up, but again, we're just never going to get this opportunity, and for years and years, it's, it's either the heat doesn't work, or the age doesn't work, yeah, you know.
Well, and I, I also have confidence in Ms. Turner that I think there are going to, you know, it, it seems like there are going to be funds available that we hopefully can use to cover it also. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Who, Mr. Dakota, and then Ms. Martin, and then-
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I, I think if we were to get the exact numbers of typical, a typical, typical day of absences within any of the buildings, I think one or two or three would probably be accurate for most of the buildings in the city. The other point I wanted to bring up is that I, I've been hearing that, especially at the high school, that, that they have been severely short of substitutes, where they have had two or three classrooms trying to merge and, and actually not have any classroom coverage, because there just aren't enough bodies. So this is something we have to address, again, two weeks ago. Seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Would, Ms. Martin, tell us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So could we, at this point, offer the administration a motion that would say to approve the increase for day-to-day substitutes, including the retired teacher rate, increasing both those rates, and moving forward to implement additional para, para solution of 10 total, distributed as you've described, as a pilot program to begin as soon as possible at these, between the Renaissance and the, and then we can look at a month, within a month or two maybe, to see if, if it works. Then it is something that we can address to bring an additional, use this position again throughout the district if we find that it's working. I'm sorry, I was trying to be really focused on the motion.
No, it's all right. Ms. Marty's been waiting, so Ms. Marty, and then I'll go to Ms. Clark.
Okay, if I could just ask, whatever you end up doing, let's separate the motions into two pieces. Because I'm very comfortable raising the rate that we're paying our substitute teachers. Although I think it's important for everyone to know, we are already paying in the top 10. We're, we're not underpaying, right? But it's underpaying because even the top 10 is not enough. So we do need to raise the rate that we're paying. I have, as I mentioned, and I'm not going to repeat my concerns with the building-based model around paying extra for benefits. I could see that as a plus for getting these people. But the other point to think about is, I, my understanding is that a para who's serving 15 days consecutive in the same building, or maybe it was the same classroom, that was the rule, automatically gets bumped up in the payment. So I think it's an expensive pilot, and I have major concerns about already starting to chip away at that money. I, I'm, I like the idea of trying to think outside the box, and I was not aware that we had building-based subs in the past. But I think that for tonight, if we could just separate those motions, I absolutely support increasing the hourly wage. I think we don't have enough information on the pilot, because how is that going to be impacted in terms of salary? That those paras who are going to be assigned to a specific building, I think may automatically be getting that increased rate as paras serving for 15 days as a classroom teacher. And that is a rate we're paying an increased amount for a para that may or may not have a bachelor's degree. So I, I don't know that the pilot, it, it's not quite checking all the boxes for me. So I need to just separate those two, because I really just want to support the increased on the subs.
All right, Ms. Clark, you have it?
I'm just going to second the motion, but I second the, the motion that Ms. Martin made, and understandably, Ms. Marty would like them separated, but I would, I just second.
All right, so you're going to second Ms. Mar, Ms. Martin's motion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right, so.
I mean, I have no problem separating them out. If, if we want to make this first motion to increase the, the per-hour rate that we pay our substitutes, that could be the first motion.
All right, so a motion to increase the, the pay rate for the day-to-day substitute. Seconded by, still want to, okay, seconded by Ms. Clark.
Do we need to say how much? Because I think we're given a range.
What was the range? $2.50? Yes, $2.50. Okay, roll call?
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Marty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yays approved.
Okay, so next motion is to, by Ms. Marty for?
No, by-
Mayor?
No, I don't think you want the second one from me, because I don't support moving forward the pilot without getting these details worked out. I think it's too expensive, and I don't want to take the money out of the facilities.
All right.
So I'd make that motion to implement the pilot with the para-professional position as described by the administration.
Okay, seconded by Ms. Clark. So roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Who first and second, Conny?
Conny and Ms. Clark.
Ms. Marty?
No.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
No.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Five yays, two nays, approved.
Okay. All right, so we're all set on this piece, right?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, 10.4, would you like me to proceed?
Budget transfer, yep, no, we're all, let's see.
We're at the transportation.
Okay, transportation, yep.
Thank you. Again, I think I mentioned this earlier about our continued analyses. You know, we set, we established a partnership with, with the state around the National Guard, supporting us for our bus drivers. Obviously, the shortage there, as our transportation director has re- Obviously, the shortage there, as our transportation director has reported, has also stressed the route creation and development. The recommendation here is for an additional clerk within our transportation division, given the current environment that we find ourselves in. Dr. Hall can provide additional details if the committee requires. Otherwise, the recommendations approval as written.
Any questions on the clerk position, Mr. Dakota? Okay, motion to accept, Mr. Dillon?
I second the motion.
Any questions? So motion by Mr. Dakota, seconded by Mr. Clark, Mr. Dillon.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
And then just 10.5 approval of the updated job description, grants analyst, Superintendent.
Thank you. This is zero-cost, budget-neutral item for the committee. It's an update to the job description to align it with the actual duties of the position now that the position will be vacated and posted. Ms. Turner actually held one of these positions previously herself, and is well, well aware of the needs of the position. She's, that's her recommendation. She's available for questions. Otherwise, my recommendation is approval as written.
Any questions on this, Mr. Dillon?
No, I'd recommend to approve it as written also. Thank you.
Mr. Dakota?
I have a question.
Yep.
Thank you. On the last page of the job requirements, do we want to leave that just as experience preferred and bachelor degree preferred? Or wouldn't, wouldn't we want that to be required like the last item?
Sure. Ms. Turner?
I have no objection to that if we did bachelor's required. I, I just feel as though the job description, updating the job description, the two positions complement each other. The budget analyst is busy during the budget season and quiet during the other parts, and the grant portion of the job is, you know, busy during that opposite time. I don't mind putting bachelor's required if you prefer that.
I think, I think that would be good to have that in there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Clark?
Thank you. I would just like to push back on that a little bit because as an HR professional, I know the idea of preferred gives you options. And obviously, we want the best person in this position, you know, the best fit. But what you do is when you put required, and obviously, there are certain positions that do in fact require a bachelor's degree. I'm not, you know, saying that isn't the case. But I think perhaps we we can find, there might be people who have a lot of experience or transferable knowledge that would, and skills that would make sense for this position. And I wouldn't want to narrow our pool unnecessarily. And so I would just ask if this was something that, is that something that changed prior? Or was that always a preferred instead of required?
Joe, Ms. Turner?
I have to say that I don't mind, but the current person that serves in the role now, she did not have a bachelor's degree, and she's exceptional. And it's going to be a great loss to us to lose her and all of her institutional knowledge. She's been with Lowell for 16 years, and she knows the finances and the grants inside and out. So I, I do understand what you're saying. It does limit you. I just don't have an, I mean, I'm hoping that you could get someone with an accounting degree that has the basic knowledge. But you're absolutely right that the current person's, you know, proof in the pudding, so.
I'll withdraw that request.
Okay.
All right. Do we argue the motion approved by Mr. Dillon, seconded by Ms. Clark? Roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Communications, letter sent to the LeBlanc School parents. Any questions on that? Motion to accept by Mr. Dakota, seconded by Mr. Dillon. All in favor? Any announcements? Motion to adjourn by Mr. Dillon, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Thank you.